Do I need to? Testing, testing. Oh, yeah. It is.
Is it the mic in here?
No, I thought I was muted. Do I need to? Testing, testing. Oh.
...
Father, we thank you for the wisdom we need to make those decisions. God, we thank you for the constitution we need and the tenacity to follow those out and to make this amazing city and even more incredible place to live, to work, to play, to raise our families, to create business, Lord, so that citizens of this area can thrive and prosper. We ask you tonight for your favor upon our city. We pray for protection upon every resident, upon every council person, upon those who serve us, Lord, and our first responders. We pray for your grace and strength to be upon each and every one of them. We ask you, God, to give us divine guidance tonight as we discuss your plans and purposes for this amazing city, as we lead together to move it forward in the way that you would have it to go. We ask us in your name. Amen.
Thank you so much. Would you follow me in pledge? Can I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Power?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yeah.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
We have a quorum, so we'll move forward. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Not? We'll move as printed. Can I get approval for the minutes on June 28th? Need to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Abstain.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Council Pres- I'm sorry, Councilmember Robleski?
Abstain.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Ah.
And motion passes. Presentation of awards? There's nobody signed up. Public comments? So tonight, if nobody's signed up in advance, so anybody that comes, we have three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Hi there. Tara Bailey. I live in Ashley Estates. The minutes you just all approved included public comment, and not all of you approved, some of them standing there, I should say. The minutes included public comments made by Heather Morgan on behalf of I Vote Madison. The public comments from this past meeting stated Heather Morgan speaking on behalf of I Vote Madison Organization. Can anyone here tell me what Heather spoke about at the last meeting based on these meeting minutes? Since the question Heather asked was neither answered nor recorded in the minutes, I am here on behalf of I Vote Madison to ask it again. Why have the videos of Dana Fletcher not been released? We've heard chatter that indicates there is a specific reason, but there has been no reason given in these chambers lately. Even as the Fletcher family and others continue to plead with you for answers, I Vote Madison is asking that you provide answers. I'd like to welcome and congratulate our new city clerk, Lisa Thomas, and respectfully request that my remarks this evening be recorded in the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to address council? Gary?
Gary Shanaw with 106 St. Mills Circle Madison. First comment, I'd like to say I'm very happy the city found a good replacement for me. I believe that he's going to be very capable of handling the job. There was one item that I'd like to get cleaned up, where I was finishing projects, and there was one item I was left unresolved. I'm trying to do it by email, but I'm having trouble with email, where I cannot send to the city. I can receive the digits from the city, but I cannot reply to the city, so communications are kind of off whack. So, there was an issue with the traffic signal at Town Madison Boulevard, I-565 Ranford. We got approval for a temporary wood pole, wood-supported system. I figured that it would be too ugly for the developer to stand and he would kick in money to do a masked armed signal, which he apparently did. He was supposed to pick up the extra cost of that. We did request the contractor send an invoice for that specific amount early in the game because we figured it might take a while to get the developer to pay.
Yes, sir.
That invoice came April 27. It's $5,200. And as of Saturday, that invoice is open. And that's just an item that I feel I've got a continuing obligation until we get some kind of resolution on. The contract was with the city only. The developer was not a part of the contract. And I would even request this time, if the developer has not indicated some means of getting it done, that the city pay for that amount and then see reimbursement from the developer directly.
So just to follow up, Gary, Steve has followed up on that. I think either your email is getting through or somebody got it to him earlier this, I guess, latter part of last week. He has forwarded that on to the folks at Town Madison, and they will pay that. They have said that they do plan on paying that, so we need to stay on it, and we'll get you your answer back.
If I could get an email ping?
Yep.
When they get paid, I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
You betcha. We'll do it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Gary. Anybody else like to address council and mayor? What's that? Oh, you do.
My name is Angela Gary. I live at 113 Millian's Way. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you ladies on the success of the city park. I would like to address the mayor and the council, and I believe Mr. Seifert is over.
I am their liaison.
Their liaison.
Yes, ma'am.
Cory is. I just want to voice my opinion and let you all know that I do not agree with the $12,000 being spent on jerseys. It's a parent's responsibility to, if they want their child to have recreation and participate in extracurricular activities. I've lived here a lot of years, and forever and ever and ever, we always paid for the uniforms and the cleats, the soccer shoes, whatever. And the $12,000 that, are they going to be passed down to other siblings, or every year we just get our own check, $12,000 or $15,000 or whatever? That money can be better spent than anywhere else. And it really sits under my saddle about that. Not so much that I don't want the children developed with the time representatives or sponsors or whatever, but give them scholarships. But you know, if there's a kid that needs a baseball jersey, I'll buy them one. I don't have a problem with that. I'm not going to buy everybody one, but I think all y'all can pitch in 20 bucks or 25 dollars or whatever. Also, my husband and I were out to dinner for the first time in God knows when, for during the Dizzy Dean? Is it Dizzy or Ditzy? I call it Ditzy.
It's Dizzy.
Yes, ma'am.
And they said that there's just not a good, that they were surprised that there wasn't a turnout. So, is that tournament complete?
I believe, yes, ma'am, it is.
Did it make money, or do you have that information?
I don't have that information for this year, ma'am. I don't know. I'd have to ask Cory on that, ma'am.
And, because I'll be sending in a request for that information, because it's kind of beating a dead horse if we're doing tournaments that aren't bringing in. And also, another question that I usually just did this before one or two people, but I'll just present it to all of you tonight. If I'm not mistaken, and I could be, when Town Madison was being developed, there was supposed to be an area for extra ball fields?
Correct. Well, when you say that, there was a development that was going to come. It was privately.
It was a.
The private, it wasn't anything yet. No, it was not City Madison. Yep.
It wasn't in Madison either?
Well, it was actually on the property that was, it was Town Madison property, but on the Huntsville side, but it was a 12-plex, and right now it's on hold. Yeah, it's on hold right now, just from the, that's one COVID did get, but we're still hoping to see something there.
Did COVID get Margaritaville also?
Still working on that.
I needed to know.
You betcha.
Very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Not? We'll move into the, because Senate General Finance Committee report?
Finance Committee did meet this evening, went over finance stuff and budgets and welcomed some of our new members. And with that, I guess, yeah, we looked at the consent agenda, and I'll let John do the donations. We had quite a few again, so I know he always enjoys that.
Thank you, Teddy. Yes, we have several donations tonight, so we are accepting the TVA Energy Right Incentive for the multi-use venue. But also donations in honor, memory of Ms. Blanche Herbie. Several donations there, as well as a check from the Madison Swimming Association to be used towards implementing Dublin Park outdoor pool diving boards. And then again, more donations in the honor and memory of Ms. Blanche Herbie, so.
And one other thing, just real quick, we talked about in Finance Committee, the 106,000 that you see from TVA, that was a grant that Mary Beth and her group applied for, and we're grateful that we got that. Pretty big deal, so with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Ah.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move into presentation of reports, and we'll start with the mayor.
All right, and I'm going to start by welcoming three, two new people and one that isn't new to us, but I'll let you guys take care of that in a minute. But Chief Johnny Gandy is with us. He's here now, in from Virginia Beach, our new police chief, and we certainly are glad to have you here. And sitting right next to him to his left is Major Stringer, and we just want to tell you how much we appreciate not only everything you did as the acting chief, but also Chief Gandy tells me just how supportive and helpful you've been throughout the course of this transition. And when we met today, it was evident that you guys are already working together. The whole goal is, again, quality of life starts with your safety and your health, and we absolutely appreciate you being on board and all support that you gave us. So, thank you both. Also, we have a new city engineer, as Gary Shanaw has talked about. I don't know if we can ever replace Gary, but Michael Griffin is on board. He comes from the city of Athens. As an engineer with a ton of experience, in meeting with him today, too, again, it's, there's so much going on in the city when it comes to all the different things that engineering touches and is a part of. We're very appreciative to have him on board and look forward to continuing as you come up to speed, to seeing you continue to support the city. We'll talk a little bit about our city clerk here in a minute, Lisa, as we get into your business, Greg. A couple of other things, one of the questions we had, and it came from the folks in the city clerk's office, is are we ready to start opening up City Hall to be used for some of the conference rooms for some of the different organizations that had been using it in the past? Starting tomorrow, we're going to look to start doing that. You know, it's time, we're back up here, and so I think in this case, we'll work with Lisa and her team to make sure that we have a couple of protocols in place, just to make sure as people rent, utilize that, that we're safe. But it's time to start opening that up. And then lastly, I thought I'd give just a quick bit of information on Rocket City Trash Pandas. So far, in 26 home openers, home games, they've had 158,289 folks come through. Again, just to give you some idea, their last season in Mobile, they had it right at 91,000, so we're at 158 through 26 games. They play a total of 60, well, probably 59 since they got rained out last night. Just to give you an idea where that stands, the home, average home attendance is 6,088 people. That leads the double A, and it's the fourth highest ranking in minor league baseball, only behind three triple A teams of Nashville, El Paso, and Las Vegas. So, really happy with what they're doing there, and very appreciative of all that our Trash Pandas have been doing for us, and with that said, that's all I have.
District number one.
Yes, sir. I have one item for our consideration tonight. It's Resolution Number 2021-211-R. And this is a resolution to make changes to the job classification plan for the court department, and all we are doing is requesting change from administrative magistrate to just magistrate. So with that, I make approval to approve Resolution Number 2021-211-R, and it's just, the title of the position does not affect pay, costs, benefits, anything like that.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Nope.
Spears.
I'm sorry, Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Ah.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. The only other thing I have is I participated in a Alabama Humane Society webinar that covered a variety of topics. And just to keep it short, I'm happy to go into detail with anyone that would like to discuss it, is just if you're interested in a new family member, to reach out to local rescue organizations. There are several in the city of Madison and the surrounding area. It's a great opportunity to have a new family member, and that's all I have.
Very good. District number two.
I just wanted to say thank you to Acting Chief Stringer for all of your hard work while we were looking for our new chief. Welcome Chief Gandy, and welcome Mr. Griffin. Appreciate y'all coming to our city, and be welcoming somebody else later.
District number three.
I'm not going to wait to welcome you. I'm going to go ahead and welcome you and let you know that I'm glad you're, you know, you're the city clerk now, and also that you are a member of my district, by the way. That's also a great thing. Again, I've talked to chief and, you know, welcome you, and of course, as a new engineer, welcome you guys, and Stringer, I can't tell you how much, how much we appreciate you. Excellent job.
District number five.
Well, this weekend is the sales tax holiday, July 16th through the 18th. You've probably noticed school supply lists coming out, and so I want to remind everyone to take advantage of that if you are able. My shop, Local Spotlight, this time, I'm going to a pet store because my colleagues know that recently I began fostering a dog, and that led me to have to take multiple trips to pet stores. And I want to shout out to Pet Supplies Plus in the Kroger Shopping Center. Just so you know, they have been very friendly when I've had to return things because they didn't quite fit. I had to go extra, extra small on the harness. And then I had to also shop for some more dog food because I wanted to keep feeding Millie the same kind of food that the rescue organization, Friends for Rescue, provided me. And their IMs dog food is $5 cheaper than any source here in Madison and even online on Amazon. So, I encourage you to go out to Pet Supplies Plus. And last meeting, I had done a shout out. My shop, Local Spotlight, was New South Hot Dog and Sushi, and just so you know, they're going to be at the Cliffs Cove Clubhouse tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00, if any of you are dying to try this awesome hot dog, so please come out. Thank you.
All right, district number six.
I just would like to add my welcome to the new ones that are joining us. We are thrilled to have you in Madison, well, you stayed in Madison, but welcome to our fine city. I hope you find us very hospitable, and just make yourself at home here. And I'd also like to add my thanks to Major Stringer. He has done a yeoman's job working for us the last six months. It has been an honor to work with him. He is, he works with distinction, and I'm sure the two of you will continue to work great together. So, thank you for all you've done. This last week, I went to the Wellstone Emergency Crisis Center. It's off of Triana. It is a wonderful facility. We now have access. In the past, if there was a, if the police came across a mental health crisis, they only had the option of the hospital or the jail. And now with Wellstone, they have a different option, and as long as this, the individual meets the criteria, they can contact Wellstone and take them there. They have 10 beds there available now. They're building a new facility that will be off of Memorial, that will double the number of people that they can have in-house as the people get the treatment that they need. So, it was wonderful to see these, this new development in our area. They do serve all of North Alabama, so if they take walk-ins too. So, if anybody has any family member or anybody who's in mental crisis, please take advantage of this, this facility in our area. They are wonderful, and I am so glad they are with us. The second thing, I want to thank Cory and his team for the wonderful Fourth of July celebration that we had. It was so well-attended. Everybody seemed so happy and cheerful to be out and about. I appreciate all that you did. I want to give a special shout out to the grill master, Randy. He worked for four hours over this hot grill. It was over 1,000 hamburgers and over 1,500 hot dogs that this man put out for everybody. And yeah, the line got long, but it was amazing. Nobody complained. They just moved from one line to the other. Everybody just had such a great attitude. So, the whole event was wonderful. I just want to thank Cory and his team for giving us that. It was wonderful to have it back in Dublin. The last thing is the senior center. They are doing wonderful things. Last, on July 7th, they had a, as they love to call it, the actively aging game day. They had over 23 vendors there. They had a live jazz performance. They had the different health screening people there. So, it was just really, it was really well done. It was very much appreciated in our community, so I want to thank Bonnie for organizing that. For bi-weekly numbers, they had 24 new clients, 788 event sign-ins, 353 card member services, 967 total event hours. Now, I thought that was amazing for that small little center down there to be doing so much for our senior citizens. So, anyone, I always make the plug, anyone has anyone, has an older individual living with them, or they're just a little on the age of the acting side like some of us, take advantage of it. They're doing so many new things. They're adding ceramics to, for 40 people instead of just the handful they have. They have so many doing line dancing. It's just such an active place. So, I do want to congratulate Bonnie for all that she's doing in that area, and that is it for today. Thank you.
All right, district number seven.
So, too, I'd like to welcome our new chief, Chief Candy, and city engineer, Mr. Griffin, and Lisa, two city clerk. So, I look forward to what you guys bring to the table and helping our city. And Major Stringer, you know, you know what you mean to me, and I appreciate everything you've done in leading the department and what you'll do through this transition, so thank you. And Chief Candy, you got a great number two there, so look forward to what you guys do. So, I do want to say one thing that was kind of interesting. Paul, you mentioned, you know, the Trash Pandas. So, I was down in Auburn this weekend at a baseball camp for my son and down there talking with the coaches and stuff, and that's all they wanted to talk about, you know, was, hey, you guys got this venue up there. How can we come up there and play? And I mean, this is a, you know, Division One SEC school that wants to come up and play in that stadium, so I just thought that was interesting, so.
You don't make that happen.
Well, I can neither confirm nor deny, so. But I just thought that was interesting. And then the folks down there, I mean, it was folks throughout the whole state, and, you know, my son and Nucky, you know, they had on the little trash band I had or whatever. And you know, my son and another kid, you know, they had on the little Trash Panda hat or whatever, and everybody's, they were wanting to talk about it. So it was, it was kind of neat to watch that, just like falling dominos. It was, it was interesting. Uh, I do want to congratulate our eighteen U um, uh, World Series winner from the Dizzy Dean Tournament. Uh, well, through the Dizzy Dean Organization, they weren't from that tournament. They did win the eighteen U World Series, which that's, that's kind of cool for, you know, eighteen U's. So uh, for those of y'all that don't know, that's eighteen and under, uh, so kind of the high school crowd. Um, and then Ms. Gary, I do appreciate you bringing that up about the Dizzy Dean numbers. That is something we try to look at every year. Uh, in the past, we've always made more than we've invested, so it seems to have been a a good return on that investment. But you know, let's let the numbers speak for themselves, so we do look forward to getting that and be happy to share that with you. So that is all I have.
Very good. Well, I've got a couple of items tonight. One is uh, appointment of uh, Ms. Lisa Thomas as our city clerk, and we've got resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two ten dash R. So I'd like to uh, move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember, I'm sorry.
Powell.
Spears?
No. No, it was Powell.
Who was it?
It was Teddy and then.
Oh, Teddy. Oh, thank you, Teddy.
It's okay.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. Motion passes.
Next, um, item I have is uh, six months ago, dur- during the pandemic, we um, as council, talked about having Zoom, um, and we would run it for six months, so we're at that six-month mark. So this will be our last night that we have Zoom. Um, as we study this, we've put together, um, in Mike Potter's um, famous words, a tiger team, um, to kind of study this, and that's going to be um, Renee Bartlett and John Seifert and Ms. Lisa Thomas and Megan um, are going to study on on what's legal, what's not legal, how how we move forward with with this, and and then put some rules in place. Um, so as they study through that, we will come back to y'all with with updates as we figure out how we can legally mo- move forward with that. I know that several towns that people said, well, they're doing it, which Auburn, Tuscaloosa, the the other towns, they have since stopped, stopped using it also because of because of the of the legality of it. So as we move forward, we'll study it, and we do want to stay on the front end, and I know that they'll keep us um, all legal and um, apprised to it. Other than that, that's all I have. Uh, there's no board commit- committee appointments tonight. Uh, public hearings, we've got one from Cameron.
Public hearing this evening, uh, we've gotten received requests from Tarsha Nelson to do businesses, pleasure excursion. Uh, they're wanting to operate one limousine within the city of Madison. Uh, they're based out of Decatur, but they're wanting to come in and provide services here in the city. Uh, the police department has signed off on this request, and uh, if the council does consent to this, of course, we will also need to get a certificate of insurance on the vehicle along with the uh, inspection report that the vehicle is mechanically sound.
Like to open the public hearing. We'd like to speak. If not, we'll close the public hearing. And for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, as long as we get all of the insurances, et cetera, that we're we're supposed to get.
Right. Once, once they um, get the approval, then they're going to bring, you know, bring all the documents to us.
Correct.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Move it to uh, department reports and start with engineering.
I have two items for your consideration tonight. Um, item number one is resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two oh two R, which is requesting approval for change order number three on the Brad Farm sidewalk project in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a, in a second. Is there any discussion?
Michelle, go ahead. Michelle, is this the email, is this rela- in relation to the email that trail that you and I had been on with regard to the sidewalk issue at Brad Farms, or is this a different one?
No, this is a different one. This is for the uh, trees that were on the north side of the road, the large pine trees.
Okay.
That when they were initially ground down, they weren't grounding them far enough, so he had ground them down. But once we put the sidewalk in and tried to grade back, it's created an uneven area, basically. So from a maintenance perspective, we're trying to lower it further to allow the H O A to be able to cut it regularly without any complications.
Okay, thank you. Is the rest of the project is done now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Um, it was Bartlett.
It was Bartlett.
Bartlett.
Seconded, um, aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
And motion passes.
The second item I have is resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two oh four R, requesting authorization for the acquisition of Ridaway for the Gardner Street Extension Project, and it's the church property, and it was donated.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any, any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. Motion passes.
And before you go, I wondered if you could give us an update on the roundabout.
Yes, so we, it's probably been stopped for about a week, a week and a half right now. We ran into a grade issue between tying in our proposed um, alignment to the existing roadway, so we've since uh, worked through that conflict, and they should be um, starting back here pretty soon.
Okay, great. Thank you.
See if I can turn it up a little bit.
How's that?
Is that better?
Better?
Go for it.
All right. Uh, the police department has one item on the agenda. We ask for uh, approval of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two hundred dash R, authorizing the purchase of our bullet resistant vests from G T Distributors of Georgia uh, through the National Purchasing Cooperative.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah. Motion in two seconds.
Give it to Connie.
Don't bow. Is there any discussion? Can't, can't.
How many vests are there?
Some of these will be replacing vests that are that are coming up on expiration for officers that have already been issued vest. We have seven new police officers and the new chief, which will also have to have brand new vests that will be purchased through this cooperative.
Can I get the uh, vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Major.
Lanny?
Man, I just got to tell both engineering and and police what a great job you guys do, not throwing the new guys under the bus there, making them come up for the first time. I know they appreciate you anyway.
This is just a first reading this evening, um, for proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash one ninety-six. This is for vacation of utility and drainage easement on five lots in the Burgreen Village subdivision. Basically, the developers requesting vacation of about two and a half feet on these five lots on the side property line. So you'll have the um, adoption and second reading at the meeting.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Recreation.
Good evening. Uh, my first item is resolution twenty twenty-one one ninety-nine dash R, authorizing purchase of L E D lights for the Hughes Road tennis courts from Muska Sports Lighting through Sourceville Purchasing Cooperative in the amount of seventy-one thousand dollars. Couple meetings ago, we talked about upgrading some neighborhood park projects. This is one of those. Probably the most, one of the most demanded things I hear from people is, why don't you like those tennis courts? So this is the first phase of that project, ordering them, and then I'll come back to you with a bid process where we do the installation later.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any, any discussion?
So it doesn't currently have lights, the the tennis courts?
It does not. At at one time it did.
Yeah.
There's some, some of the uh, infrastructure left from that.
Okay.
We're going to see if that's usable.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Cory, for bringing this forward.
All right. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Motion passes.
Second item is resolution twenty twenty-one dash two oh one dash R, award recreation basketball league uniforms to Adware and Specialty of Texas Inc. in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and ninety cents. Um, this is our normal bid for basketball uniforms. To answer one of the concerns earlier, they, the fees that are charged for basketball, the the cost of the uniform is in the fee.
So they're reimbursed, is what you're saying?
We just buy them and then when they pay, like it was back in that fund. Okay.
And the fees far outweigh the cost of the uniform, speaking from experience.
Hey, let's get a motion, then we'll discuss.
Sorry.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Discussion.
This year especially because this is a really, really low bid.
Yeah.
Compared to some of the others that came in.
Mm-hmm.
So what is the fee that you charge for the?
Oh. Hundred and, about a hundred dollars, maybe like ninety. Per child. That covers the officials, um, cost of our staff.
And the uniform is much less, is.
If you tried to buy them each parent, number one, I think that would be a just a nightmare. And I don't think they could get the price that we could get buying them in bulk.
All right. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Motion passes. Thank you, Cory. Illegal.
My favorite person tonight.
That because I'm talking garbage and trash?
She was ready for you tonight, Bada Bean. Well played, Megan. Well played.
That's nothing, that is nothing the way, that is nothing the way my wife talks to me. I can handle it.
I do have two items for your consideration tonight, and the first one is the renewal of the city's agreement with Republic Services for bulk trash collection. And the second one is the renewal of the agreement with Madison County for garbage collection. And we, when we brought this up to you all at work session last month, you asked us to do a little bit more analysis. And so what we've done is we've reached out to the city's financial advisors, who are experts in the garbage and trash collection business, and they're going to be running some numbers for us on how we move forward after this term, and whether that's with a private contractor and just stay the course, which is working successfully, or whether the city evaluates establishing its own sanitation department, which is what many cities of Madison size do. So I just wanted to make that note at the outset. And the first item is resolution number twenty twenty-one one fifty-six R to award the bulk trash collection and disposal bid to B F Highway Services LLC, which is Republic Services, in the amount of twelve dollars and seventy cents per household per month. That's going up from eight dollars and ninety-eight cents currently. We rebid this in the spring. We received one bidder, and Republic initially came in at thirteen dollars and fifteen cents. But since we had one bidder, we were able to negotiate with them a little bit. And so they were gracious enough to come down a little bit and take a little bit of the hit off of our residents. And uh, as I said, we'll continue to evaluate this going forward, but tonight, we'd like to ask for your approval. This is a three-year contract. It's an option to renew.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any, any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. And the second item is resolution twenty twenty-one two oh three R, and this is a resolution to approve a one-year renewal with the city's garbage collection agreement with Madison County, and it's staying at the current rate of thirteen dollars and fifty cents per residential park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.